Order the Planning and Zoning and Building Committee, roll call please.
Alderman, Alderman Outwoods.
He's here.
Alderman Curialy.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sosmarski.
He's also here.
Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here, we have a quorum. Next, I need approval of the minutes for December 12, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Any corrections to the minutes? If they are not in favor, they...
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next is report recommendation for special use for planning unit development, concept plan, and final development plan, final plat of subdivision, re-subdivision, and site plan review for Cyrus One data center, phase three through six, Brinmar, phase three, and I'm sure we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director.
I'm going to go through my typical presentation, and the petitioner is here to provide a presentation as well, and I'll go ahead and get started. This is for Brinmar Phase Three, the PUD portion of the project. You've seen a lot of Brinmar and Cyrus One projects come before you. This evening, what they're here for is to request approval of three items, a special use for a PUD, which also includes a combined concept and final development plan with deviations. There are eight deviations they're requesting. When the petitioner gives his presentation, he will go through those items in more detail. They're also requesting site plan review and final subdivision plat approval. I think we're all familiar with where the property is, generally at the northwest corner of Foster and Route 83. This is the entirety of the Cyrus One property. All of the area in green and yellow is currently owned by Cyrus One. Phase Two was approved a couple of years ago, and construction of Building One under Phase Two is currently underway. This phase that we're talking about this evening is Phase Three, which is outlined in the yellow. So this here is the subject property, and it is comprised of 70 lots, basically 70 former single-family homes, all of which have been demolished. The total area of the property in this phase is 42 acres. So a little bit of background on Phase Three, as I mentioned, you've seen this project before, but for different reasons. So back in March, we annexed 63 properties of the 70, and also did approval of a preliminary subdivision plat and vacated all the streets. In October of 2024, the seven remaining properties that weren't included in the first annexation were then annexed and rezoned, and those streets in that area were vacated as well. So this is generally the site plan for this Phase Three PUD. As you'll see, they're listing four buildings. It looks like three buildings, but these are two actual separate buildings, but they are touching, so it will appear as three buildings, but it technically is four in four phases. The buildings themselves range in size from about 132,000 square feet to a little over 292,000 square feet. The total area is about a million square feet, so between Phase Two and Phase Three, it's about 1.5 million square feet of data centers we will have here, courtesy of Cyrus One, in the city of Wooddale. This is at buildout, a rendering of what we would expect the property to look like. This is the Phase Two area I mentioned. This is Building One, which is currently under construction. This is the ComEd substation that will hopefully be coming in this year and into next year, and this is their second building in Phase Two. However, this project, this building, has not received final PUD approval. We have preliminary approval of the entirety of Phase Two and final approval for Phase One, which is this building. So you will be seeing the Cyrus One team again after this evening, because they will need to come in and seek final PUD approval for this one last building. This evening, the subject property, as I mentioned, is the southerly two-thirds of the property, Building A, B, C, and D. They have all of the single-family properties, so we at one point had assumed there might be some down in this area and some in this area, but now the layout is much more efficient, and it's a better use of the property. So the CDC did hold a public hearing on December 16, and they did recommend approval by a vote of six to zero. They found that the project was consistent with both the UDO and the comprehensive plan, and they recommended five conditions. These are very much standard conditions, except for the last one, which I'll explain. But the first one is that the project needs to be developed in conformance with basically the plans that are provided and the discussion at the meetings. They have to get final engineering approval if the rooftop units are visible, and you'll see some sightline drawings in the developer's presentation that shows what will be visible. But if they missed something, they will have to screen them. The developer has to maintain the landscaping that's approved on the landscaping plan in perpetuity. And this last one is a new one that is not a standard condition, but is unique to this property. So the traffic study for this development determined that not now and not in the next couple of years, but once all of the buildings are up, it may be possible. It's not guaranteed. It depends on what kind of traffic we're seeing to and from the site, but it is possible that another traffic lane, turning lane, that is going eastbound towards Bensonville, a traffic turning lane to go south on 83 might be required.
Mayor?
Just for clarity, so when I was reading, it said Foster, but when I'm looking at the drawing...
Yeah, it is Foster.
When I'm looking at the drawing, it's north. It says easement for future roads. I don't know what page this is, but it's one of the where it still shows the houses, and it's highlighted in red. So I'm confused. I read Foster, but then I saw this, that little square.
Oh.
For a future road for...I'm like, okay, which one are they talking about?
So that is not, that is for something different. That is for a potential future connection to Route 83, I believe, if it was, if it was ever needed, and if IDOT would even ever approve it. So what's being discussed here is Foster Avenue.
Right, okay.
And it's just in this section right here of roadway, just south of the gas station. There's a possibility, and it's not a huge one, but a possibility that a future right turn southbound 83 lane might be required. Now, this intersection is not under the control of the city of Wooddale, but if this development is causing the need for that, then we believe it is appropriate that they should contribute proportionally to that improvement if it's needed in the future. And the, if for some reason there seems to be an issue, Bensonville has been alerted. I've talked to Bensonville and their staff. They're aware of this condition. They're aware that we're recommending it, and that it's in the draft ordinance. They would need to reach out to the developer probably within a year after the final building was built and say, hey, we need a traffic study because we're experiencing issues at that intersection. They will prepare a traffic study. If it determine that a turning lane is needed, there will be an analysis in there that determines how much of that responsibility is attributable to this development. Maybe it's only 80%. Maybe it's 75%. Maybe it's 100%. Whatever that is, that they would pay their proportionate share and cooperate with the Village of Bensonville for that improvement. So that is what this condition addresses, and we've shown the condition language to our counterparts over at the Village of Bensonville. I think there might have been a couple of questions on that.
Alderman Messina?
A simple question. Could you go back to the aerial?
Sure.
When I headed over, I headed over there earlier, just for my own brain, it probably had nothing to do with this topic, but behind the gas station, is that church staying or going?
That is in the Village of Bensonville, and as far as we're aware, it's staying.
That is staying. Those three, okay. That was it.
All right.
Alderman Woods?
Well, that's the end of my presentation, so.
Okay.
There you go.
So back to the possible need for the right-hand turn lane. We did a traffic study. What would be the major things that would affect that changing?
So the traffic study is a projection or an estimation of what is likely to happen. What happens in the real world might be different. Maybe, you know, traffic patterns are different than we expect. Perhaps all of the employees are directed to enter through Brinmar instead of down off of Foster. So it really does depend on what's the actual situation rather than the traffic engineer's estimate.
I would assume that we modeled that. I mean, they're data centers, so they're limited. It's not a shopping center, right? We're not going to get the Christmas rush going to the store. It's pretty, it's less dynamic than a lot of other sites. I was just wondering.
Yeah, I think there's a projection that it...so there's a level of service with intersections, and it can be an A, a B, a C, and at some point, it triggers the need for another lane. And it's, I think it's on the cusp. So the recommendation from our, the city's traffic engineer that reviewed the study is it may be needed, and therefore, we wanted to make sure we covered it.
So when they, this is the follow-up. So when they looked at it, did they look at using, if I remember correctly, there's two entrances, one to Devon and one to Foster, right? Unless magically they get something poked on onto 83, but everything's based on those two entrances, so when that study was done, was it a sixty? Forty study in Brinmar. Brinmar, sorry. Thank you. Is that in the report? Do we know?
That is, and I am...
Maybe they look at the building and go, half the building is going to exit this way, half the...
They did make those estimations.
Alderman Messina, did you have a question?
I did, but I can't remember now. Oh, I remember.
Go ahead.
So I feel like five is a condition that, a little gray, so let's say there is a determin...well, an issue raised by Village of Bensonville, right? I don't know, I just feel like number five is so loose in that, so who would determine, who would make the determination whether they would be liable or not, right? Like, no offense to y'all, but like, if I was them, I'd be like, I don't see a problem. And maybe some communities could say, yeah, it is a problem. And so you have this like back and forth. So ultimately, if we were in that situation where they did not agree there was an issue, I mean, does this, is this expanded on in the agreement where it's very clear that if there's a disagreement between the Village of Bensonville and Cyrus One, that this is the next step? It would be arbitration, or that final determination would be made by XYZ? That's my concern with five.
So it is not part of the redevelopment agreement. It is a part of this ordinance, which can be enforced by us, and we have, I've talked to, like I mentioned, the Village of Bensonville. They are comfortable with the language. They think it's fine. They have no concerns.
Oh, I'm sure they'd be thrilled.
The developer has agreed...
They would worry about them.
That this is appropriate and that they would absolutely do what is necessary, and if it needed to come to an enforcement situation, we would get legal involved, but...
Okay. That was my concern, is exactly if there's just a misalignment on what is needed between the two parties, that who would determine that and how would that be determined, so. Okay.
Alderman Ames?
So just to follow up on that, so the person who's actually making the determination of that, once all the buildings are in place and the employees are in and out of there, is that Bensonville? Is that Wooddale? Like, who starts it? Like, who's responsible for doing that? I guess is my question.
So it would be, in my conversations with the community development director over there, they've got it on their radar. They will check and reach out to us. We will reach out to the developer, ask them to perform the traffic study, and the traffic study is going to make a determination as to whether or not the turning lane is needed based on engineering, traffic engineering standards. Generally, what happens after that is that the municipality hires a third party to represent the municipality that will review the traffic study and make sure that they concur with it or with whether they object. And so it's similar to our plan review process right now. We will coordinate with Bensonville to determine whose engineer would review that study at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
And then, yeah, so just, the traffic study that was in here was extremely lengthy and a lot of charts and details. So based on the number of people that lived in this area, if you even think of how many homes and say, two cars at least per home, and how many employees are potentially going to be within this campus, it seems like there's not a whole lot of employees that work at a data center compared to who lived in the community. So was that addressed? And, you know, it seems like there'll be less traffic? I don't know. Is that fair to say, or?
I actually, you know, thought the same thing. It is not the case. They did actually look at the square footage of the buildings, what the estimated number of employees. There are chip generation charts, which determine how many trips per the number of employees, per the use, and then based on the existing homes that are in the area, they took existing traffic counts to account for these existing residents and the people that are using the roadway now. They take, they increase it for the years over time because there's a percentage increase that they look at. So it is all very scientific, and they took in consideration all of those things. That's why the study was so long.
Right, and that's, when I looked at it, I got to thinking about how many people no longer are residing in that area and creating that traffic, and is it being replaced by that many employees working at these facilities? So, and I know that's hard to determine exactly, and that's several years out, but the traffic study was very thorough, so thank you for that clarification.
Alderman Sosmarski?
Isn't that thorough for governed by the township of Addison?
I'm sorry, is the what?
That, that road is governed by, Foster is governed by Addison Township, correct?
No, actually, it is not. So west of Route 83, up to a little bit past Spruce, is incorporated within the Village of Bensonville, and it is their roadway.
I know Edgewood is too, because I had the traffic triangle put in, and I had to go through the township.
There, there are portions of Edgewood that are unincorporated. Those portions are, have, the jurisdiction is the townships. Those that are annexed into a municipality are under the municipality's jurisdiction, unless of course, the roadway is DuPage County's or the state's.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, thank you. Same topic. Just so we're clear, do we have any liability or potential costs to do any of this? You say community, municipality, village, that would be between Cyrus One and Bensonville alone?
And the state of Illinois, if they want to participate in that. But no, since this is not located within the city's boundaries, and we are not bound to that under our existing redevelopment agreement, no, the city of Wooddale has no obligation.
Go ahead.
Last question, so didn't we have another thing in there about the sound that we would revisit the sound in a year? Is that still part of this? I didn't see that. Is that part of the agreement still?
It is, and actually, this may be a good segue to have the petitioner get up. They have performed some additional sound studies, and they've found that what they proposed, they need to go above and beyond what they initially proposed in order to address the sound issues, and the petitioner can speak more to that during their presentation. So would you like us to proceed?
Yes, please. Mayor, go ahead.
I had a quick follow-up on that. So you said it already, when they do this traffic study, it's going to, the rating's going to get an A, B, C, or D, like we had to do the intersection for the train right here at Wooddale and Irving, because I think it was under a D or at D, so.
Yes.
That also trigger things. Yeah, okay, so the state will be involved?
They will need to review the traffic study.
There's one more thing.
Apologies, I need my glasses.
Okay.
Before he speaks, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The truck traffic for building this project, it'd be using Brinmar and other alternative routes, because Foster is a no-truck route. Just, I got plenty of complaints on Foster, sure.
Correct. So we informed the construction team. We held a pre-construction meeting with all of the contractors, the developer, everybody involved in the project made it very clear that no traffic is allowed at all on Foster Avenue. All of the construction traffic is going in off of Brinmar. And actually, after this opens, they will also be instructing all truck traffic and deliveries, which will be minimal. This is not a logistics or warehousing type facility. It's really box trucks for the most part, delivering equipment.
Trucks coming in with the big sections of concrete that they built buildings up with.
Yes, all construction traffic has to come from Brinmar. I'm going to give you this.
Good evening. Brad Houck with Cyrus One. Good to see you all again. Happy to share some additional detail and context behind the site plan approval request, and also share an update on where we are with the project, and happy to answer any questions you have. Stacy provided a great overview of the project and a lot of overlap to what I was going to present, so I may flip through some of these relatively quickly, but get to the key points, I think, that we want to hit on as relates to noise, setbacks, landscaping, and we touched on access as well. So location, we covered this, Stacy covered this in the overview along with the site plan. We mentioned over a million square feet of new development. At the CDC meeting, I did mention just the comparison to, of this project to our existing campus in Aurora. That campus in Aurora is roughly 400,000 square feet, and just on the utility taxes alone, we pay over $1 million a year in utility taxes. When you factor in the square footage associated with this portion of the campus, along with the campus that's under construction currently, the economic impact from a utility tax perspective is multiple to that. And so in terms of scale, this is a very, very big project for us. They're very excited about it, but also obviously will be have a significant impact for the city of Wooddale. We'll touch on setbacks real quickly. 161 feet from Route 83 and 115 from Foster. And then within those setbacks, we're installing landscaping, and we also have a request to install the parking areas in the front of the buildings as well. That's one of the deviation requests. On the Foster side, it's beefed up, the landscaping. This is the specific view on the Foster side. What you'll see here is a row of trees near the sidewalk, excuse me, between the street and the sidewalk, and then you have another row of trees, once you get into our property line, followed by additional rows of trees within the parking areas. And so along Foster, you're really going to experience a tree canopy and a tree, rows of trees before you actually experience the building. So we wanted to highlight that, because I know Foster is obviously residential the further west that you go.
Is the row of trees inside or outside?
Go ahead.
Both. There's a row outside, and there's a row inside. There are multiple rows inside, actually. Terms of elevations, a lot of these look very similar. The colors and the materials are very similar to what we are constructing on our phase, what we call our Phase One acreage, very similar to what was presented before. The big change, you'll see at the top of the building are the noise attenuation enclosures. So these are enclosures that are added to the top of the chillers specifically to capture and reduce noise. And this is something that we added as a result of that noise modeling study that we performed. And so with the noise modeling study, what you do is you take your buildings, you lay them out, and you let them run it at full blast and see what the noise implications are. And then from there, you introduce mitigation measures to get those numbers down to the levels that you need them to make sure you're not creating a nuisance for the neighborhood. And so as part of that entire practice in that study, those enclosures were one of the mitigation measures that we implemented to make sure we were able to meet the IEPA noise-oriented standards. Another measure that we implemented is masonry enclosures around the generator yards. If you go to some other campuses, if you look at generator yards, you might just see an aluminum fence around those. That's traditional, you'd see those where you don't have a noise concern. In this case, we have the masonry walls to capture the sound generated by those generators and help us meet the noise requirements that we need to meet. This is another elevation view, just along Foster. One thing to note is you see in the elevations and you see in the renderings, all of our office spaces, our entrances are facing the street. That's obviously intentional. That's also where a lot of the glass and the more attractive elements of our building designs are located. So I think as you experience this project even beyond the landscaping along Foster and 83, you're going to see what we believe is an attractive building. These are just those aerial views again, just mentioned on the setback side on Foster. This is a good indication of how far back we are from the street. We are a little bit further back from the street compared to the existing properties on that side of the road going west. Another aerial view, this is from 83, just a different perspective. And then this is the primary building facade on 83. This doesn't show the trees along 83. Obviously, we took those out, so you can get a good sense of what the building would look like as you drive down 83. As I mentioned, the glass is kind of front and center, and those are activated office spaces for our building. So we've got the spaces that our employees and our visitors are using at the front, and then all of the data center space and equipment is behind that. Stacy mentioned, Stacy mentioned the line of sight drawings. This is what these are. This is on 83. I mentioned the noise attenuation enclosures. You would see, if you're on the other side of 83, in one of those parking lots, you could see just the top of one of those enclosures. And this perspective kind of shows you what that looks like. If you look at the top of the building, you see those little rectangle things. That's what those, that's what you see there. And this diagram is kind of showing you that from that furthest point, you would see just that top. On Foster, it's a little bit different. It's a shorter right-of-way, and our building's a little bit closer to the right-of-way, so if you're on Foster on either side looking up, you're not going to see the noise attenuation enclosures on that side. This is some detail, just some snippets taken from the noise study. The full noise study, like the traffic study, can be a little long, but it is in the packet. I think just a couple of things to highlight. On the bottom left here is a graph. The kind of wavy thing that you see are the ambient noise levels that we measured in 2023. This is before we were doing any construction or anything out there. And then that steady line on the bottom, the black line, is the limit that we have to meet. It's a nighttime limit of 44 dB8 at our nearest residential receptor, which is that R11, the bottom right-hand corner of the map there to the right. So we're showing that we're just below that at the nighttime limit, and then the further out you go from there, our levels are, will actually be lower. And then the further out you go from there, our levels are, will actually be lower. But this is ultimately the demonstration. And the way we're achieving this 44 dB A performance is specifically through those noise attenuation enclosures on top of the building that weren't included in our Phase 1 thing but will be. And then the masonry walls around the generators. Deviation requests, I'll run through these quickly. A lot of them are very similar to what we had requested on the first phase that were approved. I'll just, I'll just highlight the, maybe the big ones. So number of parking spaces, we are requesting reduction from 1,200 to 394. That's to account for the amount of traffic we generate. The underlying code requires a lot more parking spaces than we would ever use, so we're just trying to right-size our minimums to what we actually need. And then the other big item was the parking in front of the building. The parking in front of the building allows us to put the parking spaces closest to the entrance, obviously, for our employees and visitors, but also helps us set back the building a little bit further from the street and provides more space for landscaping. This is a snapshot of the site today. This is down at the southern end of the site looking north. This is actually taken about six weeks ago. We have ground cover in place now. There was a little issue during the demo and during the dryer months, we had some dust kicking up. We've got the ground cover in place. I think we've stabilized the site from that perspective. We have a permanent security fence in place now to secure the site, so not expecting some of the vandalism and trespassing that we saw during the demo phase. Very happy to be past that, that part of the project at this point. And then on the northern side, you see some ground disturbance. If you've driven by the site recently, you see there's a small army forming out there doing foundation installations, grading and groundwork, and that's gonna continue. And I think we are targeting topping out that building probably some time in the spring and we'll be working to plan a celebration for that to gain some visibility for the project, celebrate that progress and start to put a spotlight on the project with all the progress we've made over the past three years. With that, happy to answer any questions or just anything that I may have missed.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Alderman, Sismarski on his hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Those trees you guys are gonna plant, are they semi-mature or are they already, are they just seed later?
They'll be, geez, I think there was a requirement for a slightly larger caliper on the Foster side.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. I mean, if, they wouldn't be mature trees somewhat.
No, not mature, but.
But, I mean, yeah, standard prob, they'll definitely be smaller trees to start, for sure.
Director Springer, go ahead.
It won't be small, like one or one and a half inch caliper. I do believe it might be three inch caliper, but I'll take a look while you, while you continue.
Yeah, I feel like that was something that was incorporated into the, into the city's suggestions.
Alderman Woods?
Back to the noise. What are the big, the biggest noise drivers? Is it the chillers?
Chillers and the generators.
And when the generators fire up? Can you speak a little bit about the generators? When do those run? I know that you have like a maintenance schedule, they cycle on and off.
They almost, well, ideally, they almost never run, right? But for maintenance purposes, they run once a month for about 30 minutes. So a company will come in and go kind of line by line, fire them up, make sure the oils are moving around, get the fluids moving around, and just check them to make sure that they're gonna operate when we need to, if we need, have need them to operate. But those are your loudest kind of source. And then the chillers. The chillers just being higher up, having the ability to send noise further out, that's why those enclosures kind of capture the noise there and prevent it from, from spreading. And same thing with the masonry walls around the generators.
The other thing, going back to the right-hand turn lane and the parking spaces, we only have 394 parking spaces, so I would assume you only would have maximums 394 cars.
That's a minimum. So we changed, we changed the minimum from 1,294 to 394. So we could go over the 394 if we needed more.
So there's rule to expand parking if you, if you need. All right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So diving into that, so when you build these out, is this intended to be five users, 50 users? Is it general rule? Obviously, you don't know today.
Yeah, let's, so I think it's generally, the trend lately has been that it'd be a user per building and it could be a user for multiple buildings. Now, we have other buildings where we could have 20 people in a building, but for our most recent deployments, it's been someone taking the entire building.
Thank you.
Alderman Ames?
Thank you. So I don't know, Stacy, if this would be a question for you also, but during the public hearing, how many residents came and were there comments, questions about it, anything that was brought up from the public regarding the development?
I can answer that.
Okay. I know the answer to the second question is zero.
Okay.
There were no public comments. There were maybe three or four attendees?
Eight residents. And none of them got up and asked questions.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Quick question on the materials. Sorry, on the materials, I saw something that looked like a window with maybe more of a black slate or something. Is that, that's just for aesthetics? I take it, right?
So the windows on here?
Right. Okay, that's, I saw, I was reading it through and I'm like, it kind of gives it like a frosted glass, but it's not really glass.
It's not actually glass, no.
It's just for aesthetics.
Right. And, yeah, breaks up the facade.
Alderman, Mike Coriell?
Back to the noise issue. Are there any standards for noise, particular for data centers?
The standards that govern our site or any site are established by the Illinois EPA.
Are they specific for data centers, is my question?
Not, no, they're specific to industrial uses.
Are there any under development for data centers? Are any working groups assembled to look specifically at any characteristics or noise signatures specific to data centers?
Not that I'm aware of. There could be. I would say comparatively, the Illinois EPA standards and they're, and I don't wanna, I'm not, this, I mean, I know enough to be data, to put that in an expert. There's Class A, B, and C users. A is industrial, B, my commercial, C is residential. And so if a Class A is next to Class C, industrial and residential, there's very strict numbers that you have to hit. And we actually have that in this case. And the 44 dB A limit that we have to meet is actually considerably lower than what you would see probably in a lot of other municipalities, so, or jurisdictions and regions. So I'd say just by its nature, as it stands today, the Illinois EPA numbers are, are very stringent or aggressive.
Thank you. Ardy Woods?
Just, out of curiosity, what's the longest on any of your other properties that you guys have had to run on generator power in a worst-case scenario?
I don't know the answer to that, but I would say, I don't know that we've had one where they were just purely running on generators. It's, it would be a significant outage for it to have to run on a generator.
Just typically for a glitch in power, that kind of thing?
Right. Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, we have a transmission connection too, right? So we, and they're redundant. So there's redundancy built throughout, so that it would have to be a pretty catastrophic loss.
Thank you. How long is this project gonna take until completion?
So I'd like the first building complete by, let's say, early next year, maybe the end of this year. We move, after we complete that first building, I suspect we'll move on to one of these buildings before we come back with that little building on the original acreage, but that could change too. Maybe, let's see, five to seven years. We figure each building's probably 12 to 15 months, each one, right? We built one at a time. I don't know if we built two at a time, we just kind of moved one to another.
And what's the potential revenue for the city, roughly?
Speak on the utility tax side. Well, I mean, well over a million. If I mentioned multiples, I don't want to like dial into a number. I'd say a range, $2 to $5 million per year on utility taxes.
Just to the city?
Just to say, yeah.
Okay, Ald, I'm mayor, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. So you said in Aurora was 450,000 square foot building, about a million dollars, give or take?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I wrote it down right.
Yeah, I think it's a 400, I think it's 400.
400, yeah, I thought you said 450, close to a million in utility. Okay.
Alderman Seenam?
So technology evolves and I'm sure you guys are always gonna find a way to have, find cost savings and evolve. And I guess my question is maybe for the city, is there a minimum amount of revenue that we would have, have to capture? So that's why I'm sure projecting, you have to be very careful. Like, we can assume that it's gonna be a million dollars, but if technology comes out, they would be absolutely insane, just like solar panels on your house, right? If it gets to a comfortable level where you guys could swap out, how are we protected if all of a sudden they go from generating whatever, call it a million dollars of tax revenue for us because there's some, to 100,000? Because technology's evolved and they've made a huge capital investment and they upgrade all their building, like, are we protected? Where all of a sudden, we're making nothing, we just, you know?
I can speak to, like, so that's, what I think we're addressing is utility tax, with the utility tax, our power usage. And I didn't, I'm not an expert on what the forecast is for what the property and property taxes look like, but each building we're constructing is, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of investment. So from a property tax perspective, that doesn't go away once the investment's in the ground.
From a utilization of services, right? I, that's, that's my talking point to the residents, right? There's less people being serviced, 75 households, I think is what you guys said. So that's great and I see all that. I see, but obviously I've had, had people come to us and say, well, it's 75 homeowners not shopping and all that, right? Clear offset, just have to explain that. I guess I'll go back to what I said. In our agreement, are we protected by a minimum level of revenue that we would collect in case next year they come out with some super technology that says, hey, Cyrus One, we could save you a couple million dollars a year by doing this, doing this efficiency improvement, sorry.
So this is no different than any other business, you know, in the community. If there are new technological advances that either swing revenue one way or the other for the municipality, there's, you know, there's no control for the city to demand that they give us a certain amount of money.
Go ahead, follow up.
Not gonna diminish the project. Project's awesome, right? Regardless, we'll make way more in property taxes and I remind people that, they're watching from home as well, that continuously call me as well, the fact is they were not in Wooddale, so just the property tax revenue alone is a benefit, so. Okay, I just wanted to mention that because it's something that I've been thinking about, so, thank you. Great project, though.
Real quick, so I get asked a few times, I've heard, a billion-dollar project, billion and a half dollar project. Do we have a number, just out of curiosity? What does this cost, build these buildings? This, can you, I mean, I'm sure it's off public record, but a ballpark, it doesn't have to be to the dollar or $100.
Building for kind of our, now, our tenants put a lot of money into this thing, but obviously our kind of like corn shell cost is around 350 million per building. It might be conservative.
Okay. That's, no problem.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, there were so many good questions, I almost forgot mine, but mine was the substation. When do you propose that that would be on the line? And does that have to have, I know we didn't talk about it ever, but I've seen substations where have these 60, 70-foot lightning rods, if you will, strategically placed around. I'm assuming that protects the, from a direct hit and blowing that thing up.
So it's, yeah, it's delivering at the end of '26. The power lines feeding that substation are being delivered underground, so there isn't this giant overhead transmission project that, you know, is gonna, it's gonna disrupt. Folks along that route, but it is underground, so you won't have those giant towers.
Oh, so we won't have those, well, that's it.
Yeah.
That's what plus. All right, I can drill down on some of the other things, but good.
Okay, any more questions? If there are none, oh, Alderman Sismarski, go ahead.
What's, I see this all around every town. What's the big draw for new, for new data centers? Why is it so popular?
The amount of tax revenue that we produce relative to the impact or need for new services, I think, is the biggest driver, right? So if you're bringing in a new manufacturing facility, it's gonna create a lot of jobs. It creates the need for a lot of homes, more schools, more police fire, more services.
I just ask, because I see other towns putting data centers everywhere, El Grove, Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, I mean, they're popping up everywhere.
Yeah, there's definitely a need for them and Chicago's a market, Chicago, this region being kind of center of the country historically, is connected to the world, right, from here.
Railroad.
And it's, you know, like, logistically, you saw it too, it's logistics boom. It's a very good location in the country to be and it just so happens to flow through to networks and fiber and it drives the demand for space here, for sure.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the special use planning and the unit development as presented?
Second.
Second, and can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardy Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
And yes, and motion carries. And thank you, Director Springer. Next is items to consider at future meetings. The water tower special use coming up February 13th. Is there any other items, future items anybody wants to put in? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
One in favor? We're adjourned, thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting. Let the note ticker note that the same elected officials are present. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 12th, 2024.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation. First is updates to Chapter 7 of the Municipal Code and Master Fee Schedule of the City of Wooddale. That would be my motion.
Second.
Director Lane?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. There's kind of two main parts of this and then some associated changes to the master fee schedule. The first is there are times, although rare, when we shut a property off for non-payment of their water service, the property owner is taking upon themselves to turn their water back on. There's been a few instances, reoccurring instances, where we've had to put a locking mechanism on the B-box with a padlock to try to deter this. And we found that the padlock has been cut and the water turned back on still. So right now, in our code, our only recourse for this is the administrative adjudication process, which can be lengthy and difficult to prove in these cases. So these changes will allow us to, if we find our equipment has been tampered with and the water turned back on without our authority, to turn the water off again and assess additional fines. So that's the first part of this. The second part is currently in our code, a property is deemed uninhabitable after three days with no water, which is in conflict of other sections of the code and our occupancy requirements stating that a property needs functioning water service in order to be occupied. So this change would allow us to post a property as uninhabitable as soon as we shut the water service off. And then with the master fee schedule, we are eliminating the posting fee for this uninhabitable notice, which would more so impact residents who have their water turned off and are not tampering with it. Instead, we want to focus on those who are tampering with our equipment, obviously. And we propose eliminating, currently, there's a tiered structure to the reinstatement fee. If a property has their water turned off multiple times within a 12-month period, it goes from 100 the first time, 200, 300, and so on. So now we're proposing just a flat rate of $150 each time we reinstate the water service.
I have a few questions before I call on, so, one, the first I have a few questions before I call on, so, one, the first thing, how would it be hard to prove that someone tampered with it if we turned it off? The City of Wooddale certifies that we turned it off. How would it be hard to prove that they turned it back on?
I mean, basically, our word against theirs. And in these cases, I mean, it could be a month, month and a half after the incident occurred to where you finally get to the administrative adjudication hearing, and in the meantime, we have no recourse. They could be turning off and on their water as they please, and we have no authority under our current code to turn their water off.
Interesting.
Once again, for tampering.
And with the new adjudication process, shouldn't that speed things up even if it was left the same? Or is that still gonna be a long process?
So, under these changes that we're proposing, if we come to the residents, we find that they've turned the water back on, we'll immediately shut them off again and assess an additional fine. They'll have to pay the tampering fee of $150, and then an additional reinstatement fee of $150. So essentially, $300 every time we find that they tampered with our equipment.
And my last question, I'll let other people talk, but how many, you said a few times a year? Is two, three people that have done this?
Yeah, there's a small handful through the years that I've been here.
Okay, Mayor Police, I think you.
Yeah, so, I think you just said it, these are residents, not businesses, doing this.
Businesses as well.
Oh, businesses, okay. When I saw this, I'm like, okay, something's going on.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah. So, we changed the adjudication system to make that more robust so that we can go after the people. We're gonna make these changes to speed things up and add more fines for them breaking the law, but at the same time, none of those things make it easier to enforce the law. I'm confused on how that's gonna better anything other than the fact that you're telling me that I can fine them for cutting the lock. If I can't prove he cut the lock, how do I fine him for cutting? I'm confused how this really changes it. I mean, a couple of the things, I'm okay with fighting the person. Obviously, we don't want cutting the lock, but the end result, I don't know how we get them to comply by charging them more. They're not paying, right?
Right, I mean, it allows us an immediate recourse if we find that our equipment has been tampered with to, once again, turn off their water service.
But we already turned it off, correct? And then they tampered with it to turn it on.
Right.
And then we're gonna fine them, and then when we go away, I'm assuming the guy's gonna go back.
Right, if it gets to a repetitive nature like that, where they're continually damaging public property, then it rises to the point of a potential criminal violation that could be enforceable by the Police Department.
There you go, so that's where I was going, and why doesn't, why doesn't that exist at the first incident? Why do we have to wait three incidents down the road to enforce that?
You know, it's a minor infraction compared, you know, for damaging a lock as opposed to, you know, theft of something. From a retail standpoint, we don't want to occupy the police times with matters of this nature when we have, you know, something in our power to try to deter this behavior.
But I'm not understanding where you're getting more power. That's, maybe I'm just not getting it tonight, but, yeah, we're gonna fine them more. But it doesn't seem if anything is forcing them to comply.
We're hoping that having their water shut off again, and the additional fines assessed, eventually they do pay the water service, otherwise, I mean, this would be a larger issue.
Right, right. Over the years of being here, that's been the, talking to Brad, yourself, and other people that have come and gone, that's ultimately what happens. They played a cat and mouse in whatever that six months, nine months, 10 months, ultimately, they pay and pay some fines. And all I'm saying is that we're making this change, so if you're telling me it's just to fine the guy more money, I guess I'm okay. But I don't see where it really brings them in line. And if we really wanted to bring them in line, especially at the business level, you know, then why aren't we sending a cop out there that they're damaging public property?
So I think the big thing for us is that it provides us that immediate recourse. We have some action that we can take instead of waiting a month and a half to take them to the administrative adjudication hearing, where we may or may not be able to prove that they did this. The most recent occurrence of this was, you know, for example, we shut the water off on a Wednesday, and they pay the following Monday, but when we come back on Monday to turn the water back on, we found that the lock's been cut, and the water's been on for who knows how long. So they eventually do pay, and then, under this code, we would be able to shut their water off again and assess additional fines for that.
All right, so that was additional, thank you for that additional information. That helps to understand that piece a little better. I didn't realize that that was a thing. I'm just sitting here going, if the guy's not paying, and you find him, I'll cut the lock again, find me another 150, I'm not paying the water bill, it's cheaper.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Real quick, before I get to you, so the, one thing that bugs me about the reading of this is the uninhabitable right away. How is that, like, if someone showing up at someone's door, who obviously is going through some financial struggles, can't pay their water bill, they're getting booted out of their house day one without a chance to, obviously, they've had chances leading up to that, but that'd be my concern, so.
Right, we don't boot anybody out of their house. We post the uninhabitable notice currently on the third day, and it's just a means of, you know, trying to.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not familiar with that, so no one's showing up at anyone's house, kicking them out of the house.
Correct.
On that day, gotcha. Mayor Police was first.
Yeah, so, if you turn the water off, and the guy, it's a wise guy, he goes and turns it right back on, we should know that they're using water, right? I mean, we've got the meters and all that stuff.
Right, we don't have live meter reading at most properties right now, so we read meters once a month at the end of the month.
I know, but if we know there's a perpetual cheater out there, why wouldn't we send somebody out? If the person didn't call in and say, "Hey, my water's out," he probably turned it back on. If we do the drive-by, right, it's our guy that does the drive-by.
Correct, yeah.
Their water's running.
We could just go out and check the valve as well and see if it's open.
Again, we should be able to know right away, instead of waiting a week. Honestly, if the water's off, they should be calling you right away, right? If you're getting no phone call, that means something sinister's going on, right?
Right, depending on the situation, yeah. If it's a business that people may not be working on over the weekend, but, yeah, there's been.
We tracked that down.
Yeah, properties with their water off for a while.
Right, everybody's trying to game the system all the time.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yeah, so I, just to piggyback up your question about the uninhabitable notice. So what does, is that just kind of a, even though they're not having to leave their house, is that just hopefully speeding up them paying sooner by them having that notice? Because if they didn't get it for three days, and then now we're moving it up to immediately as soon as the water's turned off, is that just the purpose of that? Is to try to encourage them to pay sooner, or what's, can it really enforce that?
Yeah, it's to try to spur payment, I don't know, Director Wilson, if you want to add anything to that?
I would add on to that, too. How long can a house be uninhabitable for? Before some action stick, before Brad shows up at your door?
Thank you. I guess to answer your last question, how long can it be uninhabitable? I mean, technically, forever?
With someone living in it?
We've had a person that lived in their house for probably two, two and a half years.
Okay.
And then eventually, probably, I don't want to get too far down the rabbit hole, but just due to some personal issues, they were ultimately evicted from their home, a tax sale. But, yeah, they were in there for quite a while, and, you know, we, you know, we knew the lady, and it just was an unfortunate situation. We never kicked her out, but she was kind of, and we referred her to, you know, DuPage County, to the township. We even had a state rep reach out and try to figure out what was going on with her. So it was quite a lengthy, lengthy process. To the question about, you know, is it gonna get them to pay sooner? You know, probably 80% of the homes that are still off after three days, probably within an hour of them getting posted, they're calling us going, "What do you mean they can't live in my house anymore?" So, it's curious that they're fined for three days and over a weekend with no water, but the second the yellow sticker goes on the door, now they're concerned. And part of it, just to be completely blunt, might be, you know, the neighbor seeing it.
Sure.
And then them just, you know, being, just wanting to not have that sticker on their front door, so.
No, thank you.
Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, so in reference to the businesses that shut off their water, so can we have a policy, or the city can say, that if that happens, we can revoke their license and do them business in the City of Wooddale? I mean, they'll probably have more teeth than giving them a fine.
Yes, I, I might have to defer to Ms. Springer on that one, but I know with the businesses, especially those that had fire suppression systems, when those were shut off, those were immediately referred to community development, because now they have no fire suppression system, you know, warehouse, manufacturing facility, whatever that is, and that's clearly a life safety situation. So we would bring those to the, over community development immediately. If it was a restaurant, they would get shut down immediately. You can't really run a restaurant without water, so.
Alderman Messina.
Is there some type of technology, like a sensor or something, that, to the mayor's point, could kind of help us know when this hap, it's not easy for you guys to manage all that, like, does that exist? Have you seen that, like, the IoT tech, like, technology that?
Yeah, so the live meter reading that we have proposed moving towards, it has, you can get any pinpoint reading immediately from your desktop. You can see if they're using water at the premises. There's also meters that we can purchase that you can be able to shut off the water using the meter. Internal valve.
There's not even like a sensor, so like, an assembly line, right? They don't can change their entire assembly line and the conveyor, but they legitimately put a sensor on there, it's like an IoT sensor, and that lets the person know, "Oh shit, the motor went out," right? Like, I've seen that in places before. I mean, have you, can you guys do some research maybe and see if maybe there's, I would imagine it'd be a lot cheaper than the proposal that got brought forward for the meter readout. That's what I'd like to see, if we can see if that technology exists. I gotta imagine if it does, it's gotta be much cheaper, and it's just, obviously, there's a lot of man-hours to actually go out and, I guess, place those. But, I don't know, just be good to know if that is an option. Can't imagine you guys have the time to manage it all, so.
Alderman Woods.
They're driving around anyway, so they can stop by. There's only a handful of people, as was pointed out.
That's true.
So, I, I mean, yeah, it would be nice if it was an automatic thing, but I think based on the number of people, but there's gotta be a way, especially on the business end, that you can shut them down, right? Whether it's Alderman Catalano's point of revoking their business license, you just said that a restaurant where you would shut down, anybody with a sprinkler system, you would shut down its life safety. Any factory that has eye-washing stations or bathrooms and stuff, those are safety issues in a business sense. So, that food for thought, but the second part, is there any liability when we post these things and we let them? So, I'm not, I don't want to kick anybody out, but two and a half years seems to be a long time, and if something happened to that person and they died, would the city have any liability in that we allowed that person to inhabit that house even though it was posted uninhabitable for an inordinate amount of time? You know, three days, you can argue, a week, two weeks, 30 days, right? You're, you're nice guys, you're giving them a chance, but a couple of years living without water seems excessive. I don't know what the answer is, just.
Is there a question? Alderwoman Ames?
So, can you explain the process of how somebody actually gets to the point where their water's shut off? Like, how many, how do we notify them? Do we call, letters, obviously, they have a past due bill? Like, how long does it take till I get to that point where somebody's coming to shut my water up? What happens?
Oh, boy, this is gonna be fun, so. So, I guess, high level to your answer, and then I'll get more into the details, but from the time the bill that, in theory, in the most basic case, from the time the bill goes out until the time you're getting shut off, it's probably 75 days. And bear in mind, you've used that water the month before the bill goes out, so the water's been through your meter for anywhere from 75 to 100 days before you get shut off for not paying your bill. That being said, so, just for ease of conversation, bill goes out January 1st. Due date is the 21st, you have not paid your bill, and your balance is over $100. On the 23rd, we assess penalties. On the 24th or 25th, you'll get a 28-day notice, giving you until the next 21st to pay that balance that was due in January. Two days later, on January 27th, we're gonna bill you again, and that bill is then due February 21st, along with the balance from January. We get to February 21st, you still haven't paid your bill. Again, two days later, we're gonna do penalties. Two days later, we're gonna do the final seven-day notice. That's giving you, that's your date of final disconnection. Again, just for ease of conversation, let's just say that's March 8th, and you're gonna say, "Well, it's not seven days," but it's business days, and we have to account for mail time and lead time at the processor. So typically, they actually get eight to nine business days. We've also found that more people pay on Wednesday than Monday or Tuesday, so we have shut offs on Wednesday, just something we found over the years. So then when you get to March 8th, that's when we would shut your water off. Bear in mind, that's only for the bill that was due in January. You've already gotten the bill that was due in February, and now you've also gotten the bill that's due in March. So if you pay that balance that was due in January before we shut you off, you can just pay that balance, and then you're okay. But then two weeks later, you're gonna get another notice because you haven't paid the February or March bill.
Right.
If you get shut off, then you owe the entire balance, plus any shut-off fees and/or posting fees, depending on how promptly you come in, and remit payment to get your water service restored.
And what is the current fee for the water shut-off penalty right now? We're proposing it to go to 150, so I have to pay my past due balance, my fees, plus my water shut-off fee or turn-back-on fee, so what is that currently?
So currently, the first time in a rolling 12-month period you get shut off, it's $100. The second time you get shut off in that rolling 12-month period, it's 200, and then it's 300 and 400. And then the posting fee currently three days later is an additional $100. We did that tier system to try to course correct a little bit. I mean, we had one person, he's a lot better at paying his bill now. I mean, one year, he literally paid enough in fees to pay for half the fireworks at Prairie Fest. I mean, between NSF fees, return check fees, shut-off fees, it was insane. And, but, and I know Mr. Lang put in the memo, the regulars are still the regulars. You know, we have people that are paying the $200 and $300 shut-off fee, and we tell them, "Hey, if you'd have came in yesterday, you wouldn't have to pay all this." And they go, "Eh," you know, and they just keep paying it. So, the tariffs fees, we're trying, we were trying to do that to kind of course correct some people, and maybe one or two over the years have actually course corrected, but the rest, they just kind of, they keep on doing what they were doing.
And all these notices are in the mail? Do we try to call people? Has that been effective, or it's just like a last-ditch effort? Like, just so you know, if you don't come in by 5 o'clock today, your water's off tomorrow? Like, so they understand that? Or it's, you know, they could say they didn't get the mail or something like that? So I'm sure you've been through those scenarios.
Yeah, so, the people that come in and complain, they never get the notices, but they always get the bills. When we then, when we then tell them they're printed and mailed by the same company from the same facility, they go, "Oh." We do not call anybody, the code does not provide for that. And this last time, shut offs were actually on Wednesday, which was yesterday, yeah. Due to the weather, we did a modified shut-off list. Had we not done the modified shut-off list, we would have had 55 shut offs.
Oh, my goodness.
So, again, you know, if you call people, you know, we've actually discussed it with legal a couple of different times, and then, you know, if we have a bad phone number, well, then we couldn't get a hold of them, so then we didn't call them. If it's a bad phone number, then they theoretically could get into a slippery slope, due process, argument, whatnot. The hang cards, I mean, when we sent out the initial list to Public Works last week, the preliminary list, it was at 98. We sent out, this time it was around 150 final disconnection notices. So about 100 people actually paid. We sent out, wow, what, about 600 preliminary shut-off notices back at the end of December.
Is that just typical because of the holiday season, or is it every month it's that volume? Is that normal?
Pre-COVID, it was coming down, where we were shutting off between 25 and 30 people. Probably a year ago, we were in, what, the 40s, 35? Probably a year ago, we were in what, the 40s, 35 to 40? But probably the middle, the second half of this year, they've been in the 50s to 60s, the shut-off lists pretty regularly, unfortunately. So I guess to answer, you kind of put a bow on the question. I mean, calling people, ignoring the fact that we'd have to have numbers for everybody, it would take probably two people almost all day to call.
I just wasn't sure. So it's consistent? Everybody gets the same letters from the same source for the same periods of time? Nobody, it's fair? So nobody can say, I have special treatment or I, you know, get something else, so.
Correct.
I did not realize it was that number of shut offs every month. That's a lot.
Yeah. And, you know, we do have people, you know, I've lived through 40 years, I've never gotten this. I mean, it's, the system processes everything, so it's not myself or anybody in finance going through, and now we're going to send you, you and you a notice. We put the criteria in the system and it'd go and that's it, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
My last question is going to be, do we offer for extreme situations, a payment plan for a major health issue, a job loss, something to keep the water on? Is there any kind of option if they can't pay in full?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
But they have, I mean, yeah, but I will say they have to call us.
Right. They have to make the effort to reach you.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah.
That's all I need to, any other questions? Mayor Police?
I just went, I know we went through this a few years ago, so with the repeat offenders, the money that's owed to the city, I mean, I know usually it comes 80 to 90% of it is all the fines. I remember, I think one time, it was crazy number of 50, 60,000. We're not there again, are we?
Go ahead.
Yeah, currently, yeah, there's nobody in that situation. A lot of those were like the sewer and garbage only accounts where there was nothing for us to disconnect. The only recourse we would have had would have been to have ballooned the sewer and nobody really had an appetite to balloon the sewer or stop garbage service because then you have fly dumping or their neighbors, you know, something like that. So yeah, no, we do keep a pretty good eye on those now. And if somebody starts to creep up or whatever, we have our friends in Wheaton, send them a lovely worded letter and then they give me a call and then we work things out.
Right, okay, just checking. Because I know I got, it was kind of ridiculous for a few, but again, most of it was the fines because they keep compounding. Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Does this include all the fee raises for the water meters that were snuck in there? Just part of the fee schedule?
Those were done, the water meters were raised under a separate ordinance previously. That was, I forget when.
It was in the summer.
So the changes to the master fee schedule under this one, we're removing the uninhabitable notice posting fee, which was $100, and we're replacing that with a tampering fee, which is 150.
Okay. So the other stuff under the water meters that's redlined and included out, that's not part of this? I thought the original, you guys were just thinking something.
No, yeah, no changes to the water meters, water meter prices are included in this. I did give myself a hefty raise, though.
No, that's okay. We don't, we expect that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Back to the original question, yes.
Yeah. And it's also the 150, right?
Right. So the only, again, the changes are the removal of the uninhabitable posting fee, the inclusion of the tampering fee, and then removing the tiered structure of the reinstatement fee to just be a flat fee each time you get reinstated of $150.
And before it comes to council, can we have, look at if these businesses are doing it, if we can take further action? Is it something that can be included in the final?
We can consult with legal on that as well.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
I already said, yeah. Oh, I didn't hear you say that. Okay.
I did.
Sorry, I thought you, I heard the question, but I didn't hear the yes, okay.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames? Yes. Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next is approval of a purchase of Public Works vehicle number 467 in an amount not to exceed $55,000. That would be my motion.
Second?
Director Lang?
Not much on this one, just replacing an old pickup truck in the wastewater division. This will be the last vehicle replacement by Public Works this fiscal year.
I just had two quick questions on this one. The mileage is super low for a 13-year-old vehicle. What, you said you're putting a plow on this one? Is that all it's really used for? Is anything else we do with it?
Yeah, it's used for like system rounds, going back and forth between the lift stations, plowing the plants and, you know, bringing equipment back and forth to different job sites. Basically, that's typical of our vehicles, low mileage, but it's heavy use for what they're doing.
And then I guess my other one, you probably can't give me an exact answer, but when we auction these kind of vehicles, the government auctions, what kind of return do you, is that something?
We've been getting actually pretty decent return on our surplus vehicles this past year. I can provide a report. Depends on the type of vehicle. I don't think we've done any pickup trucks this year, but we did a Tahoe earlier in the year that got us about $9,000 back. It helps offset the cost of purchasing new vehicles, obviously. So if it's something the council would like to see, I can provide a report of what we've gotten in surplus vehicles in the last year.
That would be nice to see. Throwing it up. That's your offer.
Any other questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames? Yes. Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, purchase of Oak Meadows, Illinois 83 parcel for Stormwater Project, February 13th. Middle Drive, Phase 3 Engineering, also February 13th. Any other items to be added or considered? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. If the minotaur can note the same elected officials are present, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December 12, 2024, for the Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
Second.
Are there any questions, comments, changes? There are none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Report and recommendation, Mondo board purchase for the police department remodel.
Yes, not overly complex. These are continuing our purchases. We did some for the Public Works facility. We now have some in here, obviously, in exact session. And this is for nine as part of the police department project. It was budgeted for, and that's really it. I brought Mike here if you had any questions on the Mondo boards.
Alderman Arty Woods?
So three of the 98-inch monitors and six of the 55, what are they going to be used for? Nine, nine of these?
So in the report, I listed throughout the police department, they're used for our surveillance system, for PowerPoint presentations, training.
Surveillance of this building?
Yeah, throughout the whole facility, yep. It also includes a lockup facility, so if they have a prisoner down in lockup, they can view. So we're going to have all the Mondo boards throughout the station like they previously had, but in the redesigned space, so they can view in any space that they're in, the surveillance system. Also for presentation, for training, for roll call, and also in the detective division as well, for our CAD and dispatch software that's provided by ACDC. Cool. So that's a 24/7 rolling CAD system, so they'll be able to do a quick view on the Mondo board and see what is currently happening out on the street.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Messina?
You partially answered my question. So the cost for service via CAD, right? How are we showing that now? So are you talking about doing this at like a roll call, given that capability?
Well, right now, there's limited capability previously, so in all the huge spaces, they'll have Mondo boards strategically located throughout their space.
That's what I was following earlier, okay. I was reading, I didn't read, okay, so every cubicle would have, it's like a?
The usable space, so like a report writing, roll call, the sergeants, detectives and the admin.
So designate.
Yeah, the admin spaces as well.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Oh, Alderman Messina?
The other would be, and I don't, I think we're past that, right? Because we integrated, but wasn't there a system we were integrating at the county level? Was that the, was that CAD? Wasn't there another system that we were going to integrate? And if we were, would that cause interruption? I'm guessing it's an integration with the Mondo board, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's a software as a service, so the Hexagon dispatch is report writing, INet Viewer, some other products that they use on a daily basis.
So there would be no major disruption? If it was planned, we could do the integration, swap it out if there was a new technology or, okay. So we're not locked, not locked in, I guess? I just didn't want us to be in like a vendor lock-in scenario or?
Yeah, it's open, yeah, it's pretty much.
That's awesome.
Commercial off the self, yeah.
Pretty awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, actually, I just had a question too for the request for the purchase. So it looks like when they quoted this from this IT savvy, it was like $22,815 and now the price has gone up, so we're asking for $26,882. Is that, are we buying additional? Mr. Moore?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So they actually came out with newer models, so when they first quoted, it was the older model. This is for the newer model.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Alderman Messina?
So the IT savvy who we're going to procure through?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to include a dollar amount on this approval with, because we're purchasing this with the?
Budgeted.
Do we need to?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in the memo, it's $26,882. Well, actually, 26, or yeah, $26,882.
Okay. All right. I just didn't know if we had to say that with the approval, since it's a dollar figure or not, but if we don't, then we're good to go? No other questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Arty Woods?
Does that include the one from my house? Yes.
You can come and use it.
Alderman Currielli? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yep. I'd like to make the motion to approve that. To approve the Mondo board purchase for the police department.
I think you did already.
I don't, I don't know if I did or not.
I'll second it because I'm pretty sure I said it.
Okay, did you? Okay.
It was the minute, the minutes.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, now roll call, please. Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Arty Woods?
Might have changed my mind now that I didn't get the board.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
I need to abstain.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames? Yes. Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, CIP on January 23rd, budget on February 27th. Any other items? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.